Okay. Good evening. This is the Fanwood Planning Board Meeting of May 26th. And we again have an unusual situation where our designated chairman is not available and we have not yet established a vice chairman. So at the agreement of the members, which I'll get by, we'd like to have Michelle Moore serve as the interim vice chair presently and handle this meeting. That okay with everybody? If you could just
I'll make a motion.
Stand up and designate.
I'll make a motion to designate Michelle Moore as chair for this particular meeting tonight.
Yeah, you can get a ball. Okay.
Yes.
Well, I'll second.
Excellent. And it looks like everyone voted affirmatively as I viewed from the Zooms. So Ms. Moore, if you could take over and read the Open Public Meetings Act.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
In accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act, NJSA 1046, and due to the current state of emergency and public health emergency declared by Governor Phil Murphy, pursuant to Executive Order Number 103, and/or the Operational Guidance COVID-19 Guidance for Remote Public Meetings, New Jersey, dated March 23rd, 2020, and Operational Guidance Recommendation for Land Use Public Meetings in New Jersey, dated April 2nd, 2020. And in effort to prevent further spread of COVID-19, the May 2020 Planning Board meetings will be held virtually via Zoom in lieu of an in-person meeting. This meeting is scheduled to commence at 7:30 PM. Members of the public can register to access this virtual meeting by clicking the link provided. Notice of this virtual teleconference meeting was posted at the Borough Municipal Building, posted on the Borough Bulletin Board designated for that purpose, mailed to the official newspapers as provided by Borough Ordinance, filed with the municipal clerk, and on the Borough website at least 48 hours prior to this meeting, given the time, date, location, and login call-in information for this virtual teleconference meeting, as well as in the Planning Board Secretary's contact information to assist anyone lacking the resources or ability technological access to this meeting.
I'll call the roll. Mayor Mark, Mr. Boris.
Here.
Mr. Carter.
President.
Ms. Hamel.
Here.
Mr. Jukes. Ms. Moore.
Here.
Mr. Matty.
Here.
Mr. Marty.
Here.
Ms. Chelnick.
Here.
Ms. Kronspec.
Here.
Mr. Warbeck. Ms. Rosen.
Present.
Mr. Buehlus.
Here.
Mr. Sullivan.
Present.
Mr. Panagopoulos.
Present.
Now, are we expecting Junkie tonight?
I texted her earlier. I didn't see a response yet.
Okay.
Earlier, I meant.
Yeah, yeah. We have a quorum now. Can I ask, Louisa? Is that you, Louisa, with the screen saying Remy Gonzalez?
Yes, I'm with my husband.
Trying to clarify. I wasn't sure it was you two.
So on the agenda this evening, we have two items for new business. One is a residential and one is commercial. And assuming that the residential might be a shorter conversation, I wanted to ask Mr. Patel if it would be okay to switch and do your second. Where did he go? He was right. Oh, he moved. There he is.
That's fine. No problem.
Okay, thank you.
We appreciate it. It should be quick.
And so we will review Block 7, Lot 1, 186 Hunter Avenue, Louisa Jose. What I will first do is read in the the notes from the other organizations. I want to, I have it up and I'm trying to see if I have the right one. Yes, okay. So we have the Fire Department, no objection. The Department of Public Works, no objection. Construction Official, no objection. Board of Health, no objection. Rescue Squad, no objection. Shade Tree Commission, no objection. The Police Department, no objection. And that is all.
There was an additional one from the Environmental Commission, no objection as well.
Okay, thank you. So I want to kick this over to Ray, just to set it up for us, and then we will turn it over to the family.
Madam Chair, thank you very much, members of the public, planning board. It's always good to see everyone. Just for clarification on 186 Hunter, especially for our legal counsel, can you please provide us with the correct ownership on the parcel? I've seen a number of different last names, and I just want to make sure that the resolution this evening reflects the appropriate ownership name. I have a Jose, a Gonzalez, and there was not a Seid Senna. If you could please let us know what the correct name is to appear on the resolution, it would be greatly appreciated.
So I have two last names, which is Jose Senna. And then Gonzalez is my husband.
Okay, is the ownership Gonzalez, all three names?
So it's two persons, Louisa, yeah, Louisa Jose Senna and Remy Gonzalez.
Thank you very much. We just want to make sure that the resolution this evening reflects the appropriate ownership.
And that's exactly how it shows on the tax records, both full names.
And we thank you very much for joining us this evening. Members of the board, the applicant at 186 Hunter Avenue, Block 7, Lot 5, is located in the R75 Zone. This is a corner parcel fronting Midway and Hunter Avenue. The applicant appeared before the planning board a couple of years ago for a home renovation project. They are happy in their home but desire some additional privacy, especially living on the corner. They are interested in a 215 linear foot, five-foot fence. It's a privacy fence offering 125 linear feet that actually encroach upon the front yard setback. So the trigger this evening is a fence in excess of four feet in the front yard. It's 125 linear feet along the Hunter Avenue side of the house. And traditionally, when the planning board hears applications such as this for fences along the front yard, there is a vegetative buffer that's required between the fence line and the street line to offer some additional curb appeal and to break up the fence line, but that's entirely up to the board's decision. So with that, I'd like to turn it back over to Madam Chair and introduce the application this evening. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Sullivan. Now, we'd like to hear from the applicant, and I believe we need to get sworn in with Diane.
Can you both raise your right hands? Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? So help you God.
We do.
We do.
Thank you.
Thank you. Now, please share what you are trying to do here.
Yep, sure. So we wanted to have a fence on the side yard of the house, mostly for the kids. It's wide open. It faces one of the busiest streets. So we just wanted to have some fencing there, basically to protect the kids, make sure that they're in the backyard and they're safe. And we want it to be a little bit higher because our kids like to climb. So we did propose to have, you know, a little bit more height on the fence.
I'm laughing only because my kids are usually vertical as well. So what we like to do is allow the board to ask any questions, and then we open up to the public. If they have any questions or comments, would you like us to share the? If anyone wants to share, I do have the graphics up. If anyone wants me to share it so we can ask questions and look at it at the same time. But I can go through, I'll go through as I see the views of our team. And if you have any comments or questions for the applicant, I will start with Amy. Amy Hamel, questions, comments?
I can hear you, Amy. Sorry.
Still mute. Okay, sorry. I'm just not clear from the picture. If you wanted to pull it up, Michelle, like where exactly the fence is going to be?
So we have, if you're looking forward at the house, we have the garage to the left. So the fence is going to be more to the front of Hunter. So it's going to pass the garage. And at that point, that's why it's considered front yard. And that's why instead of four feet, we would like to have five feet. So it's going to be next to the garage, but a little bit more over.
So on the Hunter Avenue side?
Yes, towards the left.
Okay.
You're looking at the picture right now.
Yeah, so I don't know if you can see that there's a small line on the survey. A couple of feet, no, a little, the one further back.
Up here? Up here. You said a small line.
Where you were before, where you were before, behind it.
This line.
The proposed five-foot black aluminum fence?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, so it's going to be, what we wanted to have is just a black aluminum fence. It's visible from traffic if you're coming around a corner. Or you can come down. That's why we decided to have a black aluminum fence because it's a lot more visible for cars.
Instead of the white vinyl.
Facing the front.
So there's actually going to be an indent, then that area will be open and so it's setback. Is that the idea?
No, it's not open.
It's enclosed. It's all enclosed.
This space right here.
It's open.
Yeah, that's, yeah, that's, that's part of our yard. Yeah, that's.
And the fence will be behind it.
The fence is actually in front of it. Those little lines that you see on the, on the coming from the left and the, well, the left and the bottom, there's just indicating where the fence is actually. So if you look at the thick black line, that's the fencing.
Okay, so what's
Right here. This is, this thick black line is where the fencing will be.
Yes.
And, and what was the comment about this, then? This indent?
That's just, that's just, that's just a line showing where the fences are.
I think those are arrows.
Yeah, they're good. They're tiny, but
Oh, they're just pointing to this. Okay.
It's a little hard to see on the Zoom, but yeah, they're, they're small arrows.
Okay.
No other questions?
Okay.
Yeah.
Leslie.
So you're saying black fence along the side of the driveway and then up to the corner in the upper left side of the picture. And then I see a description says proposed six-foot wide white vinyl fence across the top?
Yes, that will be on the side.
Fence going down the other side.
Yeah, that will all be six feet on the side yard and the backyard vinyl.
That's the back of the, back of the house facing the neighbors. That's where the who will have the proposed white vinyl fencing, just to have some privacy.
That encloses a lot, just encloses a whole area.
Yeah, well, I think, I think for the side yard and the backyard, the setback for the high maximum is six feet.
Yeah, that's not subject to the application, not allowed by our ordinance.
Yes, it's 215 linear feet in total, the project, but 125 linear feet is the five-foot fence that's theoretically in the front yard. But the balance of the fence project is compliant as presented in the eyes of Zoner.
So it's really just this part here along Hunter?
And a little bit right where the, go up in the arrow and right in that little area. Now, the scan is in black and white. However, I did have a color rendering of it, but Michelle or Madam Chair, right where your arrow is, is also part of the front yard setback. So it's 125 and
You see that? Talking about that part two is part of the front yard setback.
Yeah.
And no further questions?
Thank you, Leslie. Kevin?
No, no questions for me. Oh, wait, I take that back. If the board would so choose, would the applicant be willing to put vegetation? Our professionals indicated that in these types of situations, where we have a fence in a front yard, we sometimes include as a condition of approval, you know, bushes or something in front of the fence. Would the applicant be willing to, to agree to that?
Yeah, that's, that's part of the, that's part of the plan. This is the first step, and then obviously we'll have to put landscaping in front of the yard. And one of the, you know, obviously when we cross that bridge, we'll see what requirements are there for vegetation, how, how high we can, you know, how high the vegetation should be.
Well, we kind of have an idea of what are those calls, the ones that we want to put.
Green giants. We're trying, we're seeing if we can put green giants in, in front of the aluminum fence, but you know, that's, obviously that would be subject to approval as well.
Okay, okay, great.
Is that allowed? Does it matter the height of the vegetation buffer or not?
I would just, if we were to go that route, I would just, and this is up to the board, obviously, but I would just suggest you work with our, our board professional. I'm not issue.
Thank you, Kevin, for that. I would just say that the green giants are probably not a good choice for the front yard. They do grow like 30 feet, 40 feet high, so you may want to go with a smaller shrub or a bush in that area.
Okay.
If you want to put it in your backyard, you know, that's, you're able to do that.
We'll probably put it on the side yard where, because the neighbors can see right into the
Those are excellent for screening over, you know.
Yeah.
And then the front will figure something out.
Yeah, buxwoods are nice, but you know, the board, the engineer and I are are willing to work with you with something that you'll enjoy that provides the curb appeal that you would like to see as well.
Okay, yeah, thank you. Yeah, because as the aluminum fence is not fully enclosed, you know, we still will have we won't have full privacy.
Thank you.
I'm not sure if the board would like to see how it will actually look. We did provide the images.
Do we have that, Pat, or did you want to?
I don't see any images.
It was, yeah, we provided in the brochure.
But it's, probably you can picture yourself, a lot of neighborhoods have black aluminum fencing where you can kind of look, you can look into the yard as
Right, yeah, unless you're doing something crazy. If it's a standard black aluminum fence, then
That wouldn't look appealing.
You're talking about the type that's post, and then
They're skinny, yeah, you're like skinny posts and you're able to look.
Those are very attractive, I think.
Adam?
No questions.
Jean?
Yes, I do have a question, since it's a heavy traffic area, and there's a lot of pedestrians in that area. What's the distance between the fence and the curb?
I believe it's already 30 feet. Where the, where the fence line used to be, it was maybe 50 feet. And we pushed it a little bit further towards the curb. There is a, there is a, there's a pole right in front of the, right in front of the fence that has has the cable lines that run through, and I think that setback is 20, is 25 feet, so it's, it's not past that.
So it's actually pretty, it's a good distance from the fence because the lot itself is bigger than what we own. So the lot is about 13,000 square feet, but we own only 9,000 and change. So even though we are closer to our property line, there's still a lot of space between the curb and the actual fence itself, if that makes sense.
Yeah, it would be kind of
Good visibility.
Yeah, there is definitely.
Yeah, that was, that was one of the considerations for the front fence, just to make sure. And there's no, there's no obstruction right now for cars, but just in case you'd want to have that visibility, if you, cars are coming down Hunter, they can they can see around the corner at least.
This is the sidewalk right here, correct?
Yes.
I don't know if that helps, Jean, that this is where the sidewalk is, and then, you know, the street right here.
Yeah. So, all right, and I recommend Japanese laurel, evergreen.
And your recommendations will take them.
Japanese laurel, evergreen, well behaved, fairly drought tolerant, and animals let birds love it, so.
That's the one thing we miss, more animals around.
Come to my house, we've got plenty. Is that, is that all? Anything else, Jean?
That's about it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Whitney?
I see a note that there's a chain link fence already there in existence in some place. Is it throughout or is it only in some area?
It's throughout, so the, the, there used to be a chain link fence in the side yard where we want to propose our new fence. It was taken out because we did landscaping, but all, all along the back, the back of the yard, so along that line towards the top of the page and the right side of the page, there's still a chain link fence that's going to go out and be replaced by the new vinyl fence.
But not in that front area that we're talking about. There's nothing.
No, we used to have before, but because we redid our landscaping and we added sod and sprinklers, we had to remove the so right now it's completely wide open. The kids cannot even play outside right now.
Got it. Okay, thank you.
Paul?
Thanks, Madam Chair. No questions.
Thank you. Carter?
No questions. Thank you.
Thank you. I would say that I appreciate that you're not trying to put a white vinyl fence in the front and that you're doing something else that's more attractive.
Thank you. My husband was like, that's too much money. And I'm like, well, that's what I like.
Gotta listen to the wife.
Yes.
Yes.
We just need to, if you got everybody, Ms. Moore.
I think, unless there's anything else, any other discussion, I'm not going to call on everybody, but if there's any additional discussion, then, then someone is, could make a motion.
I'd like to make a
We need to open it up to the public.
Oh, shoot.
I can make a motion. Beating the public.
Yeah.
I'll second the motion to open the meeting to the public.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, let's see who in the public would like to speak. I'm going to call just based on the name you have on your screen. If you have nothing, if you have a picture, you can just wave, say no thank you, or say no, or I will just move on to the next. See, Fernandez? Joseph? I, I'm trying, if you're Farida?
He's the attorney for the next.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Patel.
He's the next applicant.
Yeah, Mr. Arnowitz, to shake your head if you don't have anything. Tushar? Warren? Does anyone would like to make a motion?
I'll make I mean, I'll make a motion to close the meeting to the public.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
And anyone that has from the board has any additional discussion, please share or feel free to make a motion.
I will make a motion to approve the application with the one condition that the applicant work with our professionals regarding vegetation in front of the area where the where the, yes, Hunter.
So moved.
Just one question. Is there a timeframe when we have to do the vegetation buffer? Does it all have to be done at the same time, or can it be a couple of months after?
You have to get it all done by tomorrow.
As long as it's reasonable and, and just try to give our, our professionals an idea of when you're doing it, okay?
I think at this point, you're going to miss the, the spring planting season, so I think it would be fair to say the, the fall planting season.
Okay, perfect. I appreciate that. Thank you.
It's September.
Are we ready for a vote? Mr. Boris?
Yes.
Mr. Carter?
Affirm.
Ms. Moore?
Yes.
Ms. Hamel?
Yes.
Mr. Matty?
Yes.
Mr. Marty?
Yes.
Ms. Chelnick?
Yes.
Ms. Kronspec?
Yes.
Ms. Rosen?
Yes.
Ocean Carries. So next month, we will have a resolution to approve at the June 22nd hearing, and then you can get permits for your fence.
Appreciate it.
Thank you very much. So does that mean we cannot call our landscaper tomorrow and do it?
We have to wait.
You have to wait.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, Pat.
Well, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you all as well.
Take care.
So we have the second application, and I can I will read, before we introduce the applicant, I will read the letters.
Pat, real quick, there's people in the waiting room, I think.
Why am I looking at? I think I have the wrong. All these have different. Oh, the first one had the wrong address. Okay, the rest of them have the correct. Okay. The construction official, no the entrance must be ADA compliant. Verify existing entrance is compliant with 1 ICCA-117.1-2009. Environmental Commission, no objection. The Fire Department, no objection. The Shade Tree Commission, no comment. The Board of Health, no objection. I think I got all of them this time. And I'd like to invite Mr. Sullivan to set it up, and then we can introduce and swear in the applicant.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. The application this evening is 45 South Martine Avenue. This is Block 65, Lot 12, in the commercial corridor central zone on Martine Avenue. This may be the future home of the Fanwood Pharmacy. Dr. Patel is anxious to relocate his South Avenue project to his own freestanding site on Martine Avenue. How I would like to introduce the application this evening is basically a three-pronged approach. This is a planning board application featuring a former PNC Bank, which has been retired and will be replaced with the Fanwood Pharmacy. The applicant is anxious to utilize the existing drive-through that exists. It's a pre-existing condition. So this is a matter before the planning board this evening. The meat and potatoes of the meeting this evening will be the site plan improvements and the variances. And I believe Schiller-Pittenger and Joe Furito, Joseph Furito, will be representing Dr. Patel this evening. And the final leg of the, of the prong is prior approvals, and I want to lean on a 1980 resolution. The bank had buffer requirements, easement agreements, and deed agreements, Lot 12 being the principal lot, and subdivided lots 6, 8, and 9. There is a vegetative and fence and retaining wall requirement that's needed in perpetuity. So that'll be a discussion. I believe I have discussed same with Dr. Patel, and he's interested in honoring the, the vegetative buffer line and fence line between the parcels that abut the residential R75 Zone. Madam Chair, this evening we have Diane DeBulis, our council lead. We have Antonio Spanagopoulos, our borough engineer. I will represent the land use plan, and Junkie Patel is our borough engineer, who has her report available. I'm sorry, Junkie Patel is the borough planner. Thank you. With that said, I'd like to transfer it back to Madam Chair to introduce the project.
Great, thank you. So as the applicant, I'm not sure who's going to lead your testimony, but you are welcome to start, and we will swear in or honor your professionals, however, whoever's starting.
So I mean, I could introduce myself really quick. My name is Mittal Patel. I'm the pharmacist and owner of Fanwood Pharmacy located at 246 South Ave.
Mr. Patel, if I can interrupt you, if you're going to be, so, do you have an attorney representing you?
Yeah.
Okay, who is that?
Joe Furita.
Joseph Furita, Schiller-Pittenger, and Galvin Scosh.
Terrific, thank you. Okay. Mr. Patel, are you going to be testifying? Terrific. Thank you. Okay. Um, Mr. Patel, are you going to be testifying?
Um, and, uh, actually, I mean, I could, but, uh, Joe and, uh, uh, Corey Fernandez are architects, uh, are gonna take, you know, take on all the questions and the details about the project.
Why, why don't I just swear you in? Cause it seems like you are swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Okay. Go ahead.
Yeah. So in order to meet the growing demands of our customer base, we're looking to relocate, uh, the pharmacy of 45 South Martine. Uh, the, the new facility is, uh, largely existing and offer a drive-through function, uh, to better serve the needs of our, uh, clients. So I want to turn it over to Corey Fernandez. He's our lead architect in the project.
Hello, everyone. Uh, we'll take a moment to swear in.
Swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
You could give us a bit. Sorry.
I was just going to say we need, um, your credentials so we can recognize you as a professional.
Yes, my name is, uh, Corey Fernandez. Uh, I am a registered architect in New Jersey and New York, and I am the owner of the company Total Architecture.
We make a motion, a motion to.
Are you currently licensed?
Yes.
I make a motion to, to affirm, um, the witness as a expert in the field of architecture.
Second.
All in favor? Thank you, Mr. Fernandez. You may continue.
Okay, uh, so the, uh, meat of the project is to, uh, mostly interior work, which is gutting the existing, uh, bank, um, and repurposing it as a pharmacy. The exterior work includes putting in a new drive-through window. There was an existing drive-through window at one point. It was closed up with brick and you're going to reopen that with a new transaction window. Additionally, uh, the parking is in the rear of the site. And to better improve customer access to the pharmacy, we're putting in a rear entrance. Um, the rear entrance is a couple of steps down from the existing grade. So we are putting in steps and a railing and an awning over that area. We're also proposing new signage, uh, for Fanwood Pharmacy at the front of the building. And in the cellar, uh, we're going to, um, there's an existing office in there. We're going to reuse that as an existing office, uh, for, uh, Dr. Patel. Uh, we did get some comments. Um, what's the best way to go through those?
Well, would you like to share your screen or would you like me to share what we have? And then you can talk through it with a visual and you're welcome.
All right, I'll share my screen.
So that, so that we see what you're talking about as you're going through, but you can go through however you'd like to proceed.
Everyone see my screen?
Yes.
Okay. So, uh, this is the site plan. Um, this is the new rear entrance I mentioned, two steps down from grade, uh, with a new entrance into the rear of the store. Part of this is relining the parking spots at the rear of the site to get 10 parking spots, including two handicap spots. We are proposing a bicycle rack to be placed at the rear of the building and new drainage from the sump that we're creating from the new stair landing to existing drainage that's on site. I'm gonna flip the page now. These are general details for the work, uh, the site work we're proposing. Uh, this is the existing property survey without any work shown. Okay, so starting from the cellar, uh, these are all existing spaces. Uh, it did recently flood out. Um, so some of this was, was damaged, uh, but we're just replacing the flooring down there. And, uh, we're proposing two new walls for an office, uh, for Dr. Patel. Uh, there's an existing pantry with a sink, um, which will serve as a general break room for employees. Uh, there's an existing thought, existing utility room, janor's closet and existing men's and women's toilet down in the cellar. The, uh, first floor, so this is the proposed plan. This is the rear entrance that we are proposing from the back of the site. Uh, we will include an ADA toilet and, uh, immunization area. Proposed retail at the front of the store and then the pharmacy at the rear of the store and, uh, pharmaceutical storage. Uh, down here is the proposed transaction window to be served by the one existing drive-through. This is a roof plan. These are the front elevation. So this is the elevation from Martine Avenue, uh, with the new signage we're proposing. Um, with signage lining, it'll be a front, uh, front lighting, uh, for the signage and that'll be gooseneck is what we're proposing. At the rear of the store, this is the new entry, uh, the landing below grade and a new awning with the pharmacy signage. Uh, the new transaction window at the canopy side of the building is shown in this elevation. And, uh, this elevation shows the gooseneck lighting. This is the side that faces the gas station. Because we're looking to put higher shelving along that wall, just because, uh, to distract some of the view of the gas station, we're going to put an opaque film, uh, just like a, a window tint. Halfway up on those windows. The top will remain clear to let in light. And then we're also seeing the side of the proposed awning, uh, and then it'll be a room around at the edge of the new landing. But, uh, that includes all the drawings that we proposed to date.
Uh, ma- madam, madam chair, if I may, I, I, I have a question regarding some of the architect's testimony at this point.
Great. Thank you.
Uh, for the architect, can you please explain the window tinting on the southernmost side? And the window plan for the westernmost side of the building, which is the front of the building? I believe the picture that's, that's presented on the screen now faces the gasoline station. Uh, can you tell us the purpose of the window tinting? Because the ordinance speaks to clear windows. So it, it encourages pedestrian flow and curiosity within the windows. If you can please provide additional detail regarding the window tinting, because it, it is against the rules that govern the borough. So this would be a waiver of, uh, a condition.
Okay. So yeah, these windows, uh, face the gas station and I'll go back to the plan uh, of the inside. So this, we're proposing slat wall. So to maximize the amount of retail we can put in the store, you know, a higher wall can have more retail, uh, more items stacked on that wall. So, um, if you're walking by here, if the tint's not there, then, um, you know, you'd be looking at the back of higher shelving or you wouldn't be able to have higher shelving. You know, we'd have to keep it low.
It, it is preferred to have lower shelving because, because again, you're trying to create curiosity and have people have pedestrians and traffic flow look in through the windows to see the services and the retail services that are provided at that establishment. So it's appropriate to have clear windows. Blocking of windows is again against the intent of the ordinance, especially in the downtown and commercial district.
Okay. I think, um, we can work with that. We can do lower shelving.
And, uh, can you please explain the front as well? Is, is there a plan to tint the windows? Block the windows or if, if a family was walking down the street as they were passing the former bank, would they be able to peek in and see the activities that are happening about the Fanwood Pharmacy?
Yes. Yeah. So the, the existing windows will keep completely open. There's no window treatment planned for that area. Uh, we kept the shelf storage away from that front. So the shelving is perpendicular to that row of windows. So the view from the street into the shop remains open.
Okay. Thank you very much.
No problem.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Is that, that your full testimony, um, Mr. Fernandez?
Yes.
So, um, and, uh, Dr. Patel, we also have, uh, one other testimony, correct? So we, we can take a brief, not break, but we can go through the board and see if they have any questions directly for the architect. And, um, and then we can move on to Dr. Mr. Furito.
Just, I'm sorry to interrupt. Just, just to be clear, I, I will not be testifying. Um, I'm here to help with answering questions as well. Um, if it should have.
Thank you. So is there any other testimony or should we, we should just go ahead with questions?
Please go ahead. Questions?
Okay, um, I'm going to start as I see you and you always shift around. So, uh, Kevin.
Unmute myself. No, I, am I muted? I'm not.
We can hear you.
Okay, good. Great. Um, I, I, I guess this is a sort of comment and half question, um, for the architect. I, I'm, I'm slightly okay with the waiver for the tinted windows and higher shelves. And the reason I'm okay with it is, and Ray, you can comment on this more, but as I understand it, um, we don't like tents on windows in Fanwood because we did have tents on one of the buildings downtown. And, um, and you couldn't see in. And, uh, that, that was a bad thing we thought. Um, well, these windows just face the gas station and A, that's, it's not like a lot of people are walking around in the gas station peering across the parking lot into the pharmacy. This is just my thoughts on this. So, um, maybe the architect could answer. Is there really? Do you anticipate a lot of people walking around in the gas station, looking across the, the drive aisle through the windows to look into the pharmacy? I mean, I understood what Ray was saying, but I, I, I don't quite agree with what Ray was saying. So I don't know. That's just my, my thoughts or a question.
Yeah, um, it, it wasn't, you know, so much from trying to keep the view out, right? It was just trying, you know, a higher shelf is preferred, um, and it, it's just more aesthetically pleasing to see, you know, a slight tint or even a translucent tint rather than the back of the shelf, right? I think the distance from the floor to the sill of the window is maybe, um, two feet.
I mean, I don't, I don't, I don't mean to. It just seems like not a big deal to me and, um, I don't know. I, it's on the side. So anyway, I, I just don't want to.
Maybe we can address that at the end and see how everybody feels.
Yeah. Okay.
Thank you, Kevin. Amy?
Uh, maybe I missed this, but I just wanted to make sure that, because one of the comments was about the ADA entrance, right? There was in the back a ramp, I think I saw.
So the ADA access, uh, is, is the front, the existing front entry is ADA accessible?
Okay.
Um, via Martine Avenue, or if you park in the back, there is an ADA accessible ramp and a curb cut where you could travel from this curb cut along to the front entry. The rear entry, uh, while we are maximizing all barrier-free requirements with offsets from doors and a five-foot landing, it does not have a, a ramp. So this would not be the ADA accessible entrance. It would be two steps down into the store. Those two steps are 15, uh, you know, it's a 15-inch difference. So that would be, you know, if we did a ramp, it would be a 15-foot ramp. Most likely we'd have to turn it at some point. Um, so we're looking at, you know, probably close to 20-foot of ramp and it, uh, is obtrusive at the rear of the building, uh, for 20-foot ramp.
That was my only question.
Thank you, Amy. Adam?
All right, it was on mute. Thank you. Um, maybe it wasn't discussed or maybe I missed it also about the existing drive-through or what's happening on the exterior with the, this looks like the three bays there. Are there, are those being, are we keeping those or they're, they're, we're cutting those back? I, I don't know if I heard anything about that.
So the intention is that the drive, the distant drive closer to the building will be the drive-through lane to pick up pharmaceutical products. The other two lanes are past the rooms.
So just going to keep the existing, uh, roof that's there, the curb, the, the, everything that says is going to stay existing though?
The concrete landing, the piers and the canopy, yes. Anything that would be bank-related, um, vacuum tubes or, or would be removed.
Okay, so still, okay. So, yeah, not changing the look. It'll just be, uh, the, the drive-through be the closest obviously to the, to, to the building. Okay. All right, now that was my only question, I guess. Thank you.
Thank you, Adam. Leslie?
Um, I was curious about the drive-through and I heard for use for transactions, I'm assuming this is like drive up to pick up a prescription from the pharmacist. Okay, and, um, I think that's a nice thing to have. If it's a, you know, it's a sick person, it's better to have them drive up than walk into the store. And I have no other questions.
Thank you, Leslie. Jean?
Um, I must admit, I love the Fanwood Pharmacy. And I, um, they provide such great service to my family during the pandemic, through the hardest time and consistently excellent service. I'm glad that they're expanding and, and investing in Fanwood. And the drive-through is really something that we need. It's very important. And I do think that the existing turn-throughs over there might need to be revisited because there's a lot of, I remember there's some Belgian blocks or some blocking over there that might interfere with parking. But, um, but I do see Ray's point of view in that the side of the building should be somewhat attractive. And I'm thinking perhaps a very slim awning so that when you're coming down the grand and you're looking to your right or, you know, you're, you're looking at that intersection where there's a gas station, you see an awning and you can see, oh, pharmacy or something like that, something, um, and, um, and that might be a compromise. See something, something attractive on that long side of the building that's very sparse. And it is the beginning of the commercial block in Fanwood. Like, so if you're, that's where Fanwood Commercial Area starts. Kind of that intersection is very open. So whatever's going on there should be really attractive or should try to be, uh, you know, if you look at the dentist's office across the street, they have awnings and it looks very attractive. So something like, if the architect could accommodate something like that, um, Then that would be good for everyone. That's all I had to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Jean. Um, Whitney?
Um, I don't have any questions, but I'm gonna follow Jean's lead and just let everyone know, we're a big fan of Fanwood Pharmacy here too. And I, I was actually a little bit disappointed when I first saw this application and I didn't realize it was Fanwood Pharmacy. A month or two ago because it was at the, the corporate name, and I was very pleased when I finally saw the family pharmacy piece, so best of luck to you guys. Uh, we are all looking forward to this.
Thank you, Whitney Paul.
Um, yeah, thank you for investing in the community, um, I would just wanna say that I, I don't have any questions, but I would. Support additional discussion, um, at the recommendation of Mr. Boris and. And Ms. Rosen to further discuss the potential for a waiver or alternative solution. On the gas station side.
Thank you, Paul. Carter?
Thank you, I don't have any questions, again, from a, from a council standpoint. And uh, longtime resident, like to thank Mr. Chell and his team for continuing their investment in our community and. Of course, there's anything that we can do for you outside of this board and you can always turn to us and we'll be there to support you. Much.
Thank you, um, my comment, I have to echo Whitney and Jean, just uh, I'm a huge fan of Fanwood Pharmacy. And my disappointment is that moving will double the distance that I have to go to get there. We were, we were patrons on day one, so a huge fans, um. One question that I have when we're talking about that sidewall is, it's towards the gas station. And this is kind of a question for Ray, but I'm curious. Just exploring another idea, if it's clear, but there's like a window box and you have something like a window display in there. Would that be still considered um. Compliant, or does it have to be clear all the way into the building, does that make sense?
In, in, in the eyes of zoning, it should be clear, however, a condition of approval. The board might wanna consider it's a hybrid response to the. Southernmost wall, leaving the westernmost window treatments a clear. But if the board wants to consider a hybrid version which provides the shelving on the interior and provides. Something uh, that's curious. Uh, uh, two passersby is along La Grande Avenue or the approach from Scotch Plains, maybe something as a condition that the board. Can entertain as far as.
What, what would that be?
It could be the box, it could be, it could be a tint on that side if you wanted, it could be a shade. We, we prefer not, we prefer being able to see through, but. The board is in a position to impose conditions and that might be a, a hybrid. Resolution to the applicant's goals as well as the intent of the ordinance.
Thank you. Um. So at this point, maybe we open up to the public for questions and then we can continue the discussion.
Can we um, first hear from our professionals about the comments to their letters? So that the architect can address those.
Thank you. Yeah, let's hear from our professionals.
John, you wanna go first?
Sure, uh, thank you, Chairman, um, I had few comments on the building uh, exterior. Um, for the architect. Do we have uh, the front elevation that proposes any new light fixtures or uh, other than the main sign, any other smaller signage? Or uh, awnings or canopies? Um, that is my first question, um. And I'm referring to the comment five A and B in my letter.
So. Our proposal right now shows a new signage, uh, there's also an existing planter at the front, uh, which we plan to. Um, you know, put plantings in and refurbish, that was the extent of the front facade approvals. Uh, we do also plan to uh, do a masonry cleaning of the entire building.
But do I understand that there, I'm sorry, Janki, I just need to clarify, there's not gonna be any. You're just cleaning the building, it's not being painted or no new material or.
Correct.
Yeah, as, as we uh, see in the CCC zone, um, the recommendation is to develop. Um, awnings and canopies to provide shade and relief from rain, as this would be the frontage along the main street. For people who walk by, so um, that would be an improvement if that can be attached to the building as a new. Facade improvement that would be uh, something beneficial to this zone, um, however, we understand this is the existing building and there is no. Um, change in the window style or material is proposed at this point. Um, any door improvements or the um, in terms of handles or lighting, um, that would be also beneficial from the aesthetic perspective. So um, it is, it would be one of the recommendations I have is um, to have some exterior improvements to the building, um, which is. Not kind of um, the, to, to the, the facade material, but uh, something that would look more attractive compared to the um, buildings. Building that is existing in the um, site there. So um, and um, the other comment I have is for the signage, um, I know that the signage is shown on the elevation. But uh, we don't know. What the measurements are, so for the um, zoning office of the borough, it would be um, good to include that information in your final plan.
Agreed.
Can there be an awning on the side with the gar, uh, the gas station?
I'm sorry, can you repeat that?
And there be an awning at the window on the side near the gas station that we were just talking about, would that be acceptable, Ray?
Awnings are encouraged, however, what we need to ca- take into consideration is the driveway aisle. If emergency apparatus can navigate through, i- if the uh. Awakening protrudes beyond a certain point, I'm not sure if the emergency services will be able to perform their duties. I, I don't know what the proposed width or length of a, an awning might be, but yes. Awnings are encouraged in both the front and the sides.
But an awning wouldn't specifically. Without further discussion, deal with the issue of the, the clear transparent glass.
That, that's correct, again, it can, it can be a hybrid condition of resolution or the windows remain clear as the intent of the ordinance.
So, Yanki, was that everything?
Yes. And I do believe um, that the lighting fixture details are shown on the plans, but um, if uh, the zoning officer has reviewed that. Or, and then if that is acceptable, that's something I just wanted to point out. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Antonio, so Ray, you had.
Yeah, can, uh, thank you, madam chair. Um. So, did, did the applicant see our professional letters?
Yes.
Alright, so on uh, my grading and drainage comment, uh, one of my comments was. Um, and you kind of talked about it earlier, uh, that you said you don't have space to put a ramp in. Um, you have about, I don't know, forty feet between the curb, the existing curb and the parking spaces. Would it be a possibility to uh, bump that curb out closer to the parking? Um, to create a ramp, so. I, I, I'm kind, it's like a sticking point to me because. An ADA accessible route is the shortest uh, route from the parking to the building. And by doing this, you're forcing them to walk all around the building, down a narrow walkway, do you, do you know how wide that walkway is? Outside of the building?
Not offhand.
And I didn't, I didn't measure it, but I, I know it was pretty tight, um, when I went out there. So, if someone, let's say somewhere in a wheelchair is pushing down there, it's, it really is kinda tight. Um, and then you have a tight driveway there also. So it's, it's like, it just doesn't, it didn't feel right to me, uh, to have someone walk all the way around the building to get into the front door. Um. So Ray's measuring.
Well, I mean, we, there's a few, uh, a building is required to have one ADA accessible entrance and we have that. We're also providing a drive-through window, so. That's another plus. Maybe disabled, that, they might not have to get out of the car at all. Uh, so I, I, it's, I think we're meeting the intent of, of the code by uh, providing one ADA in, in the rear entrance.
Uh, yeah, I mean, it, it's showing, uh, Ray's measuring the, the plans now, it's about three and a half feet wide. Three, there, three and a half and bump it to four, including the Belgian block curb, so it's really three and a half feet. Of concrete sidewalk along the westernmost side of the structure. Uh, so that, I mean, that, that was one of my um. Thoughts is uh, it's just, it feels uncomfortable walking down there, especially if I, you know. We're fortunately not in a wheelchair, so I don't know if someone in a wheelchair, how they would feel going down. Um, the sidewalk over there. I, I, I would guess they would bypass the ramp and just wheel themselves down the, uh, drive aisle. But that's just me, I don't know. Um. My next question is, and I don't think you have the right person here. Uh, could testimony be provided uh, to talk about the, the expected difference? In peak hour trips during the, uh, between the bank, which is previously existing and the pharmacy use? Just, I'm, I'm just looking to get a, a change.
We did a brief. Uh, Dr. Patel on that, um. Dr. Patel, are you, are you willing to, to?
So yeah, so the peak hours are usually in the morning, just like a bank, I mean. Um, our, our peak hours are between nine and I wanna say twelve. Um, and then. Goes up again around five PM, four, four to.
So there's, there's something called the IT, it's the Institute of Traffic Engineering Manual, which I am gonna guess. You're not a licensed engineer to be giving testimony on. Uh, and, and I'm just looking for a, a difference in bank versus. Pharmacy use, I don't know if there is a difference between the uses, if they're both retail or whatnot, but. Um, you know, I, I just wanted to see if there was a considerable difference, if any, uh, between the two uses. Um, so it sounds like you, you just don't have the, the right, you don't have an answer right now.
Right.
Oh, okay, so I'm gonna, but go to the next question, um. So we just passed an ordinance saying that uh. Uh, retail uses like this, any parking lot with more than a few parking spaces need to have an electric vehicle parking spot? Um, would you be willing to install, I mean, it's, it's a requirement. It's a mandatory uh, uh, requirement, so. Um, you're gonna need to install one electric vehicle parking spot?
Agreed, uh, we'd, we'd be looking uh, to you guys to give us some guidance on um. On that requirement. Uh, and.
What's the, what kind of guy, I mean, the.
Uh, you know. You know, using a certain product or a certain company.
Uh, we don't, we're not gonna, you know, we don't have any uh. Um, allegiance to one way or another, I, I think it's conflict of interest, yeah, it's a conflict, so I, I think. Any kind of charging station. You know, a, a, a slower charging station.
Okay.
Um, whatever, I, I, I think it's type one, I, I don't know what the types are.
Well, yeah, I understand that some of these charging stations go on to a network. So that people in the township know where the ta- the charging stations are, so.
Yeah, we're, I, I don't think we're looking for that, we're not looking at that kind of detail.
Yeah.
Um. I'm sorry.
Yeah, we're, we're willing to do it, we'll, we'll work together with you guys to, to get it done, so we'll show it in the revised resolution. Uh, we're gonna tap EKA to lead the design on that as, as the civil engineers and then.
Is, is EKA online this evening?
No, they are not. But, yeah, we are willing to, to put that station in and that will be in the plans.
Do I, do I understand that the only person who's testifying is an architect?
Yes.
That's correct.
I mean.
Yeah, tr- traditionally, commercial properties include the architect, a planner if needed. And the uh, engineer of record to provide site plan testimony. I don't know if council has a comment. Mr. Mr. Furito?